Welcome. I ask your patience, we have a lot to go over. We will get to you in the order of the agenda, okay? We don't have any minutes. Mr. Lynch is in the midst of moving and the counselor is excused because his computer's in a box. So we'll let him go. Mayor, Communications, anything other than what's on the agenda, Mayor? No. Public speak, I know the library's here, the entire library.
I'm in your part of this library. You got a small Joey.
You guys, I'll let you speak when we get to your budget unless you want to speak now.
We'd like to speak then.
Now? Go for it.
All right, so. Ms. Caitlin, can I end up making love?
Caitlin, uh...
Identify yourself.
Identify yourself if you're speaking.
Sure, Caitlin Kelly, I'm on the Public Library Association of East Hampton, and the board, and also chair the fundraising committee with my co-chair Gina.
Maybe give a cheer. Sorry.
All right, that's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. At the Emily Williston Memorial Library, adults can take yoga classes for free. They can participate in writing programs with a published author for free. At the library, parents can bring their babies to baby time and help them to build the foundations of language and literacy for free. Programs like Baby Time and Family Storytime are lifelines for parents looking to be part of their community. At a recent library event, the mayor acknowledged that she and her daughter met lifelong friends at the library when they first moved into town. At the library, you can sign up for technology help for free. You can use the Internet, get assistance with a job search, borrow movies, and meet friends or classmates in one of the library's alcoves for free. And if you can't make it to the library, the library staff will come to you, teaching housing search workshops at the enrichment center, setting kids up for summer reading programs at the farmer's market, and bringing books and other materials to homebound residents, Lathrop, and the treehouse communities on their new book bike. These things are free to all residents of East Hampton, but they do have a cost. For a city that's pretty good at acknowledging the importance of libraries, our local government's unwillingness to fund a library beyond the actual bare minimum is a disgrace. For the coming fiscal year, the gap that the Public Library Association of East Hampton will have to make up with fundraising and investment income is almost $190,000. This is more than the library's modest endowment can bear and is not sustainable. If the city continues to leave our appropriation at this inadequate level, the gap will only increase as the state's minimum wage continues to rise for the next four years. Libraries fill the needs of their community, whatever they are. Library staff develop programs to enrich young minds and provide services to support the most vulnerable in our community. They do this with a smile despite a shoestring budget, but there's only so much they can do without funding. East Hampton's current level of support for the library is not enough. The proposed $213,466 for fiscal year 20 only covers 53 percent of the library's overall operating costs. Given that fiscal year 19's budget covered 57 percent of the library's costs, the city is essentially proposing to defund the library by 4 percent. As such, we respectfully request that an additional $28,000 to maintain staffing levels, put books on the shelves, and to continue to provide the quality service to the community that East Hampton residents have come to expect from their local library.
Thank you. Anybody else? That's it? I want the library to know, as I've said to every group that's come in, that's asked us to raise their budgets, the City Council does not have that authority. That's state law, and it's in our charter. But the person who can, just heard you, so thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay.
Chair, can I ask you two issues?
Yep.
So we just renegotiated the city, the contract with the library. We have 1.00 percent in commitment from the city to revisit the amount that we fund. I am waiting a little bit to see what happens with the conference committee on the budget. Right now, both the House, the Governor of the House and the Senate has enforced the idea of increasing that percent to the library's, which would increase the money that the library gets. It not have a specific dollar amount, but it is five figures. And classically, what the city has done is pass through the city budget, the percent, the minimum percent required by the state. So the city, if the state percent may go up, and of course, if we pass through to the library, it's $28,000 on the not work. With the contract that I have negotiated or been negotiating with...
We haven't finished just yet.
Yeah, we have one element, major element, that looks at a percent or commitment of the city of the time, putting more money into the library, and just not at a point to make that commitment, but there's an ongoing competition.
Would that commitment be this fiscal year, or do you have to wait till next fiscal year?
Um, the state.
If the state.
So the state is next fiscal year, and it's outside of the contract that's automatically increased the library. The specific elements that we are still going back and forth on, in collaboration, is just a further commitment by the city to the library above and beyond the state minimum. And our forecasting model is just a little tricky of where those additional funds would come, and I need to know what the state's going to do, and where I reasonably...
So they might see it this fiscal year?
I think that there will be, because the state funding formula being redone through the state, the minimum reimbursement, that will be needed to the state.
There you go.
And what the city can do above that, I am, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna pull up, go ahead.
Just a quick question, is that something you find out by the end of June?
I, I direct to the Chair. This is public speak, you may answer, or...
You may answer.
Um, thank you. Sorry. I hope that the state passes the budget by June 30th for a bunch of good reasons, including our letter against the minimum funding.
I just didn't know their timeline. You guys know it inside out.
My longer timeline is June 30th, so.
I'm gone, press was, yeah.
Public speak during subcommittee meetings is a little more flexible, just...
I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. All set. All right, on to new business, $85,297 for the police. No way.
That was short.
Uh, I am assuming this is to cover, as you stated, I think, recently, or the Mayor did, this is to cover contract requirements that were shortfallled in the budget.
That's correct.
If you and Val would like to go over how you're doing this.
Sure, I'll speak to it. So our budget that we had put together for the budget season, we used an adjusted figure. So we're level funded at our adjusted figure from last budget year with given a number of 1.75 percent as a max increase. So we worked off of our adjusted budget, which included a 3 percent contractual raise. Finance worked off of the budget prior to the 3 percent raise, so that 3 percent raise was not funded in the budget, the original budget request. To that end, we put in the same 3 percent as an appropriation the year before because of, um, the basically leveling the budget. So we held off a 3 percent after last year's budget for an appropriation, put that appropriation into our adjusted budget, and then worked off the adjusted budget numbers times 1.75 percent. And then when we got the budget back from finance, it was less that 3 percent contractual raise. So this appropriation makes up for that 3 percent.
In 2019 and 2020?
Correct.
And this is all okay with you, Val?
Yeah. I suggested this, rather than redo the whole budget, and, because then you have to consider where the funding's coming from. You have to either raise local receipts, and right now, there's an issue with the state may lower what we're getting from what we estimated.
Yes.
And it could get pretty hairy, so my suggestion was to vote it outside the budget and from free cash now, and then I'm able to encumber it into next year as a reserve for expenditure, and then add it to the budget as amended budget. So the same thing will happen again, I mean, it won't be the original budget, but you won't have to redo 364-page budget and try to finagle where the money's coming from. This way, it's just from free cash. And you don't want to vote free cash to the budget because that's a whole nother issue where we, when we got our AAA-plus rating, we did new financial policies, and in those policies, we were, we said we don't use free cash for, one time, for repetitive funding like the budget, so putting it directly into the budget would be doing what we said we weren't going to do in our policies. So next time we go for more money for the school, or we have to go through the bond rating process again, they'll see that we did not follow our policies that we set up to follow, and we could lose our bond rating.
They don't like using non-recurring revenue to fund operational...
Right, right. And this way, it's just a supplemental to the budget, so it's not, we're not funding the budget with free cash, we're just supplementing a line item or a couple of line items with free cash.
Well, you're the auditor, and trust you know the law. And as an accountant, okay, this puts our free cash at a very low level, as I understand. Mike here, what are we at, about 200? We're at 200,000 now, I heard at the last council meeting.
That sounds about right.
And you bring it with me.
This will put us around 120 or something, 115 for this year. Okay. Obviously, we have to fund the contract. If we don't fund the contract, we have to lay off police officers, correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right. Counselors, questions? Bill?
Why would we do it now as opposed to later on when it's actually closer to being needed?
Well, right now, you have this year's free cash available. June 30th, it's gone, and then all the books get closed, and it's not available again until, until the new free cash gets certified next year. So you would have to use next year's free cash later on in the year to add it to the budget. And at this point, we don't know what we're going to have for free cash next year.
Okay.
You don't know if you can want to spare 90,000 for a supplemental budget.
Typically, that'd be in October, November...
Yeah, it does, never...
And sometimes later. Sometimes later.
I generally send it in in September, and it's done right away, but I'm not sure what's going to happen this year, because there's a lot of things that have to happen before it gets certified.
Mm-hmm. Where does our remaining free cash go once it's not used?
It closes, and it becomes part of next year's.
Okay. So they just wait until they certify it, so we can't touch it, but we get it back next year?
Can't touch it until they say you actually have it, go ahead and use it.
Gotcha.
The only thing we can touch is stabilization, because it's like a savings account, but I'd read an article, which is something I wanted to bring up. Northampton is going for an override to fund their stabilization account. That's how they're paying for their increases. That is, in my view, reckless financing. And if the override doesn't come, they're going to come up with $2 million. If you use stabilization funds, you're using non-recurring revenue to fund the operational budget, and our bond rating, which is critical to us, maybe not in Northampton, critical to us, would be really effective. So I agree with this method, because we don't want to fund the budget using unknown recurring funds, as you say, in October. Anything else, Joe or JP?
This was for contractual obligations, May, last May?
Yes. The, yes, the contract, the police contract was 3, 3 percent, zero, so for the three-year contract, 3 percent, zero, and 1 and 1/2 percent the last year.
So 3, the 3 percent was from July...
Correct.
Last year.
Correct.
Till June of this year, 3 percent increase.
Unfortunately, this July is a zero, so I won't be looking for any contractual obligations for this year's contract, because it's, fortunately for me and my budget, it's more than a zero year now for the police department. So they will not be getting a raise this year, this July.
Mayor?
To just clarify, so, um, police contract was open during fiscal year 19, on May 23rd of last year. In this committee, when we came before you, on public safety, the amounts in the final agreement of that contract were not finalized, and we did not put them into the budget with the understanding is that we wanted to present a clean budget. On record, I said that there would be an adjustment fiscal year 19 due to the contract, and just not knowing before close of end, close of last fiscal year's budget of what any of these would be. The intent was, and again, on record, was to go for an appropriation during this year, this fiscal year, rather than the pointy referring to what the auditor laid out as far as strategy and the policies adopted in October of 2018, around what money we would use. I concur with the Chair that it could for East Hampton's fiscal policy practice industry, that the use of an override proposition 2 and 1/2 in the way that Northampton and other communities is, is not appropriate for us. We don't have the tax levy to support, nor we anticipate our property values going to the level of Northampton or more wealthy communities where that would be a strategy we should be playing.
Okay. Joe, anything?
No.
Anything else, Counselor? Then I'll move that we accept $85,297 in free cash to be spent for all of the police accounts as listed. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is up for, oh, you'll be there anyway, Chief, but it's up for, on our agenda, I think it'll be first this Wednesday. Okay? To the budget. First thing up is revenue, page 17. This is not something we approve, but it is what, if I had not had a problem with our first meeting, this would have been the first thing we discussed, because our first meeting, I had to cancel, I was out of town. So we moved that meeting to the end. So revenue would have been what we talked about first, which dictates how the budget's So in my mathematics, I'm looking on page 12, unless anybody wants to talk about, whether Val or the Mayor wants to talk about the summaries, I want to get to the numbers. Anybody want to talk about the summaries? The biggest increase is debt exclusions. You see 5,839,000. That is the debt exclusion for the school plus other debt exclusions. That increase amounts to 21 percent increase in property taxes. We have an increase in the levy limit, we have an increase of 582,000. 2.5 percent is what we normally add every year to the budget, it's what Prop. 2 and 1/2 limits us to. That's 582,000. That plus the school means our taxpayers are getting hit pretty hard this year. We all need to be prepared for the fact that they may have forgotten that they voted the school in, for, anyway. What I'm really disturbed about, and I'm hearing that you're saying that the revenues may even go down lower than our cherry sheet has given us in this budget, is like Chapter 70 and unrestricted local aid, very little increase.
Oh, yeah.
Very little. And now you're telling us that that might be less? What do you know?
Just looking at the indication, the House, the Senate, the Governor of the House and the Senate budgets are in, there's quite a work to do, be done in the conference committee, which is underway, and while across the Commonwealth, Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 money, the total amount may go up because of the size and various factors in that formula, we actually could end up in a negative with maybe a deficit as big as $220,000 in the moment to support it. There are efforts underway to do supplemental in Chapter 90 because of the surplus this year. We hope to find out about that in the next couple of days, but that would, that money would...
Specific to the roads, though, it's...
Yeah, it's...
Not going to help everybody else.
I'm not saying no to anything.
No, no! I don't think Joe will complain if there's more money for roads.
There's never enough money around, and I think, I think that Joe would agree with that.
Yes.
Yeah, and then, and Chapter 70, education, and really, that comes down to what happens with the charter reimbursement, and if there's some relief for a city of our size and makeup.
Or around 2.5 million with...
Yes, it would be hopeful.
Charter choice and charter tuition, that's ridiculous to me, but okay.
I'm hoping for some neutralization on that, where we would actually reimburse the rate or tuition out going via size.
So assuming that bad case scenario, we're down $200,000?
Yeah.
That's if we have to dip into free cash. How does our bond people think about that? Because that's how you would make it up, I assume.
No, I, I don't know how I would make it up.
Oh, okay.
And that, not that I'm not thinking about it, but I think there are several strategies. And I will be very forthright that the keeping of the AA-plus bond rating is key, so we'll run terms to the city.
That's why I wanted to ask you if that happened.
And I don't know, you know, I think that's something we would look at as far as recap for, or quite honestly, cuts in, in operations, which are already pretty big. I am hoping for the vast on where we ran on fiscal year 20.
My question was, if you did use free cash, the bond people wouldn't like that, even though it was a lack of state funds that caused it?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
They still wouldn't like it?
Oh, no.
Because that's millions of dollars, everybody, that's why we keep our run on that, interest rates. Okay. I'm done. Are there any questions from the other counselors on revenue? Nothing, Bill, JP? Joe?
So we all hope and pray for good, good, good luck at the state level, until trouble down.
Yes, Representative Kerry is hoping to have some indication by tomorrow, and has officers up here tomorrow in the police.
Joe, you had a question?
So new growth is considered under revenues? Or is that, is that considered a revenue? What has, has, um, INSA, is that, what, is that new growth going to be in, what fiscal year is that, and will there be new growth money for Berry Street, or because we have, we're doing tests and discs, or less likely to be new growth with that?
I'm, I'm... I don't know how you would get new growth from INSA. New growth is related to tax levy.
Yeah, but it would have, you know, it would be a more valuable building, or does that come from...
Personal property.
Yeah, exactly. So you get more...
Maybe.
But obviously, apparently not a lot.
Yeah, it, yeah, it depends on, I mean, they have active permits in front of us to go from 30,000 square feet of cultivation to 90, I mean, 60,000 square feet. I would assume there's a more equipment needed, but the value of that equipment is, you know, sure, it adds, but I'm, you know, not blowing my breath. And, and we've gotten, you know, the beginning of this local tax, but that's outside of what we're going to be here. When Berry Street, the estimation would be in fiscal year 20, that there would not be new growth captured there, but, you know, 21, I mean, we have a gap overall, you know, where we have a lot of things coming that will help us, but they really don't start hitting the tax rolls at the very lowest, and so fiscal year 20...
The 150 is a...
And that would be...
That's a typical conservative estimate of new growth, because you can't tell what people are going to do, who's going to build what. And the 55,000, if I'm using that figure right, from cannabis revenue, was one quarter's revenue, and that's what you decided to use for this year, because you don't know what this quarter's going to bring in, and you don't know what's going to happen next year. You can't predict four times that, that would be irresponsible to put that in the budget. So it becomes free cash next year. If it comes in next year, it becomes free cash for the following year, right, Val?
Yeah. Not only that, but DOR won't let you estimate more than you've actually taken in the year before, unless you can substantiate it somehow.
That's smart, and it's a good way to, prudent fiscal...
And this happens every year with the revenue budget. There's, what, five steps until the final budget? And the final budget is always after you vote our budget. So it's always, when we set, when we do the tax recap, it's always a juggling act to move local receipts around, move the allowance for abavance or overlay around to make it work so that we stay within our tax levy.
Okay. Anything else on revenue?
It happens every year.
So the host agreement money was for one year, after one year of operation?
Yes.
Operation was in, started...
December.
December, December. So the first payment we could expect would be...
30 days after the first day of operation, if those are the first year...
So sometime January next year. And that's anticipated to be...
3 percent of your total sales in the first year.
3 percent of total sales. Are the other agreements the same, pretty much?
The other stores?
The other locations.
Quarters? Yeah. Go ahead, Joe. You can speak to that.
Well, we have no other operators currently, but the other agreements are structured slightly different, that you would get the quarterly payments over the course of the year rather than waiting the entire year. So since it was the first, it was set up differently.
Right, right. Okay. I'm sorry, did you say that amount? The amount that's expected?
No, it's 3 percent of gross sales.
3 percent of gross sales. And we don't know what the gross sales...
No.
Will be.
No.
But we do have the figure of tax revenue.
That was 55 for one quarter.
55,000 for the first quarter.
For INSA.
Jan, well, December, whatever, through...
Yeah, December, January.
Through March?
Mm-hmm.
Through March.
And we won't get this quarter's rating until after June, right? If we don't get the tax...
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
That's, there's a... Thank you.
All right, we don't approve the revenue, but we wanted to know what it is. General Government, page 31. First thing, it's the City Council. We got to cut our little state travel money, but I noticed in the budget when I went over it, not many people got state travel money, so we weren't the only ones. And office supplies, I saw that that's in another account line now.
Yes.
For all the budgets, guys, you saw that, right? I'm on page 30.
Page 30, right.
So the council's budget is as it is, there's not a lot there, that's different. Our council advertising's up a little bit, I guess because we expect ordinances and things to have to be advertised. Okay. Anybody have a problem with the council? Any questions from the President of the Council?
Just, why didn't it show up, the $900 that we asked for?
It should have been there as a requested line, and it wasn't.
Right.
That's a mistake. I know you zeroed it out, but Melissa forgot to put it there.
So that, there was a question on that. And then the clerical thing, clerk to the council, she ironed out exactly how much it's supposed to be, and it was a 3240, and it was cut to 3090, which was level funded for last year. So I just, I know we can't add to it, but I just wanted to make...
Is that one less meeting?
I think it's one, the actual number of meetings was the...
The problem?
The 3240.
Yeah. Yeah, it was 24 meetings at $75 a meeting, $120 a month, 12 months, 1440, 1900 is 3240.
Yeah, and it was cut back, even though there is an extra meeting, she's... Next...
Well, we'll have to have the President of the Council discuss that with the Mayor at the time. We have to pay the clerk to the council if that comes up. I mean, unless we cancel the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we won't have minutes. I don't think we can do that. The Charter says we have to. Okay? We're moving on. Mayor's office. Mayor's here. Mayor and City Attorney, do you want to talk about any of your narrative before we go to numbers?
Um, I mean, just the narrative where we're seeing a continued consolidation of legal fees.
Well, when we get to that, we'll talk about City Attorney.
Let's talk about numbers.
Okay. I noticed the municipal clerk and principal clerk, they're 34 and 15 hours FTE.
Yes.
Is that because we... Is that because before we had one person?
Um, that...
Is that one person or two people?
No, it's two people. It's two people, one half time and one full time.
Okay, it's less than halftime, 50.
Yeah.
So, the money for that adds up to 5650, is that what I'm reading? Okay. Education and training moved to, I'm going to call it human resources, correct?
Yes.
All of that went there, okay? I don't have anything else? Bill, Joe?
I don't have anything else.
JP, anything? On the mayor's budget?
I didn't have any.
We're going to go to the City Attorney, though, that's part of the mayor's budget. I'm assuming we jump to 65,000 here because we've got labor negotiations. This City Attorney budget covers all attorneys, not just Mark, right?
We do have within personnel...
A line for that?
Yeah, we have a, we have a service contract with a labor attorney.
So, is this just our City Attorney, 65,000?
No, though it also includes negotiations.
It does include negotiations.
Sorry.
That's what I asked, okay?
In labor, right.
In this budget?
Yes.
Okay. Because it went up a lot, but I'm assuming we have contracts coming up this year that we didn't have last year, for revenue.
Um, we, we have contracts, but we also have significant legal expense around the projects going on in the city.
Oh, like one period?
Yeah, and, and some of that is covered by particular grants or programs, but some of it is not. Also, just thinking about charter and additional review, whatnot, that would happen in the budget.
That's true.
Yeah.
Thank you for saying that, because I won't put anything to Mark until it's all I want. We, we do have an entire, besides the ranked choice voting, we have an entire document to put down.
Yes, yes, I'm not, I'm not saying there's $65,000 for that, just considering...
That would be a rather thorough review, though. All right, I don't have any other questions on the City Attorney, gentlemen?
Uh, just periodicals and books, that was cut, and every year we were a little over two grand on that, what, what are those exactly that we're not going to be paying towards now?
Well, some of the periodicals, I, I just don't want to spend money on them, but a lot of the cuts, it's not that I don't want or need, it's just kind of, when I get out the budget letter, 127, I, I give it the strategy required, so...
Is that something we might ask for later, you think?
I, I do not see period, I, I don't foresee that.
This is her budget, so she's...
I understand it's her budget, I'm, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I, I don't see, and, and it wasn't a, a big, it just wasn't a, a big need this, this year.
Okay. I assume that the internet helps with that anyway.
The internet does.
And the library!
And the library, and the library, and the library, yes.
Okay, the auditor, oh, do you have anything else on the mayor's budget, the City Attorney budget, from anybody, counselors? Going on to the auditor. The only thing I have is the financial audit done by Scanlon, it is Scanlon again, that's 23625, it's not up a lot, but that's what it, that's all that's for, right? Is that audit, it has to happen every year? DOR required, okay? And you have how many assistants? One assistant? One assistant, okay. Okay, I have nothing else on the auditor? Anybody else? Joe?
Office supplies moved over to a different...
There is a whole account we'll see in here on office supplies, I think it's a new one, I think it's under finance.
A few thousand dollars there. This is a, thank you.
All right, now I want to get to the assessor, that's next. I have some major questions, I'm glad Peter's here. Lori couldn't make it, she sent us two. I guess you're deciding on whether to go with Vision or Bishop?
We already signed the contract, I haven't signed the general...
With who?
The bishop.
Bishop, so the contract, all right.
The contract that is in there reflects what you said.
I want to get a little bit from me, because I'm very concerned from our auditor, I'm sorry, from our, for our assessor, and for the Board of Assessors, raising taxes 21%. We've had a couple of individuals already come complaining about senior citizens getting taxed, local businesses complaining about each other. I want our, our assessors protected from that kind of unfair criticism and accusation of corruption, or whatever they want to say. And I am very happy to see we're doing a reval, because to me, that's an independent of your office, evaluation of all city property. My biggest question is, it is independent, you and Lori don't get involved in that, they do it, they look at your books, they look at new growth, they look at permits, they look at, uh, sales, and they make their own judgments, correct, Peter?
They go back into the past, I believe it's 2017, 18, and 19, some of their data. The, the reval document is pretty thick about what they have to do, what we need to do statutorily, so, and again, because of the, some of the growth in the commercial sector and stuff, that's something that has somebody who has that degree of expertise, that brings it in, and again, it's a third party.
It's a third party, that's what I like. So, our auditor, our assessors and our principal assessor have no influence over this, and they're not allowed to, right? Okay, I'm putting that on the record, because some people think differently. Every home, every business gets looked at, there's no, we're not shortchanging it in any way, because we don't have enough money or something, everything gets looked at?
Lori can speak to that a little better, or the chairman of the board can speak to that a little better than myself, but I believe that, I mean, we have upwards of 5,000 houses to be looking at.
She said 6,000 in here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, whatever, whatever that numbers, and that's what we would be doing. And the, the hired company will be totally in charge of the personal property, commercial industry.
So, if somebody, they do, I was reading in her report that they, or Bishop's PDF that she sent just today, that they have to do a site survey. They see something new...
Yes.
That wasn't there before, vacant land, it's no longer vacant, or something like that, they're going to reevaluate it. As far as I know, the law, if this, if they get a new assessment and it increases their taxes, you can't go back a year or two and make them pay back taxes, right? That, that's against the law.
But again, what...
People are worried about that, that's why, tell them, no, you can't do that.
Well, what you're saying, it would come into any new growth or something that came up, that's why they would go back three years, they would go back to 2017, and perhaps that was a vacant lot, that was assessed at, you know, X amount of dollars, and there's now a commercial building inside, that we had, and perhaps it could be under assessed for, for whatever reason, it hasn't caught up, but they are the ones that are going to be the ones that are going to be looking at the historic last economic, and, you know, it's, it's not kind of a one-year thing, it's a historical...
Right, and if there's been a mistake made by prior companies, or prior assessors, or whatever, that's not going to penalize the current owner of the property, or anything like that, but it will, going forward, it may increase taxes significantly on that business if it was a mistake.
Yes.
Okay. And I say all this because, again, we have a 21% increase in taxes this year for everybody, and that, to me, means you're going to get a hell of a lot of requests for abatements and things like that, and I want it, I'm glad, this is kind of happening at the perfect time, because then a third party can be pointed at, this is what our independent review said, your property is worth. To me, that's very good, and 25,000 is enough money to cover that, according to Lori.
That is, you know, for the 15 and also the 10,000 for the inspections that we would be doing, that our office would be...
What does that have, that's inspections?
Well, there needs to be personal inspections as part of the statutes.
What is that, why, why do we do them, why isn't the bishop doing that?
Um, I think that we're doing some, and, and, you know, I don't really have that information, I didn't talk...
Does that have to do with reassessing too, the personal inspection?
It's just, it's just, it's the information that's needed.
And then you give that to Bishop?
Right, because a lot of that would also come from building permits.
Oh, I see, building permits.
So, you know, if there was a permit pull, it's been done, but, you know, usually Lori would go in at that point, but if somebody has changed something, we have no knowledge of it, that's the basis of our data, is to have good data, you know, and honest data, that's the thing, you know, we can't make things up, and you don't want it, nobody wants to be in that position, and nobody wants to be on the other end, and we understand as well.
But that inspection is pure fact, pure data?
Yes.
It's not a subjective adjustment judgment?
No, no.
I'm just going to...
Right, since she outsources it, except for building permits and sale inspections on houses.
Right, that's right, she said that. Yeah, she sent us an email.
Right, yep.
You certainly want to do as much as you can in-house, with in-house staff, and not just aim contracted, and do data collection, you can do data verification, that makes, that certainly makes great sense.
And it will carry out in the upcoming years, but the thing is, having that third party coming in to co-lead, and again, be the impartial person doing it, and again, in, yeah, things change, you know, people change things, and the main thing that, that will drive some of the values is going to be condition.
And the final judgment, the final appraisal, even though Lori might be given data...
Sure.
Is done by Bishop?
Yes.
That's what's important. Appraisal was done by Thirka? Okay, that was very important for me to get clear at this meeting. I don't have anything else on Lori's budget, do you guys have anything else on this?
I had a quick question, it's called a revaluation year, right? Every, how many years? Every three years.
I thought it was changed to five, I heard that from Mel.
I had heard, I had heard three and then five, and I wasn't sure.
Melissa said five at the last meeting, is it?
I think, actually, I think it's great that it has...
It's changed to five from DOR, does anybody, Mike, do you know that?
I don't know, I can't, but I can look at it.
Well, I confirm that, but I'm, five makes it a little more budgetary.
Right.
But, so that means over five years, we have to do independent assessments.
What, what happens is you would catch up on changes.
Changes, permits.
Sure.
Okay. And if somebody sold their house, that's considered a change of ownership from there?
Yes, all of that, all of that would be a change, a change from a vacant lot to a new house, whatever, those things.
If somebody sold their house and it was worth more when they sold it, then it was being appraised, then the assessment is redone, correct?
I mean, and we, we get that information from the registered fees as well, and we still...
Okay. JP, is that answered?
The reval, every three or every five years, completed within the one fiscal year of the $25,000.
Yes.
So, there won't be another $25,000 for at least another two years, and perhaps could be even longer.
Maybe not for another five.
Very good, no, those are my questions, thank you.
Anything else, Joe or Bill? All right, thank you very much for being here, Peter, because Lori couldn't make it, and she did send us stuff, which was very informative. The next thing is personnel, soon to be called human resources, we call. Oh, wait a minute, finance, did I skip finance? For those of you who don't know, Mike is here as our, Mike, your, your last name escapes me, Mike?
Owens.
Owens, Mike Owens is the, you're the first assistant?
Assistant, I'm assistant.
So, you're very familiar with the budget?
Somewhat familiar.
Okay, we'll take that. I don't know if you want to say anything about the narratives that are in here, you don't have to, I just give the department heads a chance to talk about it.
I'll simply say we serve a critical function in the city, we're the tax collector, and finance, and the treasurer, so we're responsible for all of the money the city collects, we assure the tax bills, no debts on the tax, property tax, personal property tax, and we're responsible for all of the city's finances and control of the management.
And there's five people in the office?
There is.
Okay. The only question I had was, it's interesting, I thought we funded payroll processing last year, but it's not listed in the budget, line, city payroll and school payroll processing, do we do all of that, we outsource it now?
We do.
It's not in the budget, but it's at 13,200 this year, is that a mistake that it's not listed? Because I know, I remember doing a, I thought we did a supplemental for that.
For the, the software, or...
Oh, maybe that was it.
I think it was for the software package.
So, this is the actual company doing it?
Yes.
And they didn't do it, they didn't do it for this fiscal year? I don't, that's what I'm asking, because it says 2019 budget, nothing's there.
Yeah, it's nothing.
I thought maybe that was another typo?
No, I mean, the, the processing is by hardware, there's not, I mean, it's...
I know we're paid.
...are, are connected to the payroll perks, but there's not processing fees, the processing fee.
I understand that, I just thought there was a fee for 2019, and you're saying there wasn't, wasn't one, Bill? I know, it's not here. Oh, you don't have it there either?
Yeah, not last year's budget.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
I'm sorry, yeah.
She has, he has last year's budget, because Bill comes prepared.
Last year's budget, okay.
I hit 2021, I wrote it.
Get the gold star here.
The next thing, Mike and Mayor, is under professional services, there's a $36,000 budget in 2019, it's dropped to 10, what does that cover, and why is it down to 10?
Professional services would be any company we engage with for professional services like public auctions, tax title properties, professional services, our legal counsel that works with us for tax title properties.
So, we did, we needed a lot last year, we don't anticipate more this year?
I, I will be very honest with you, I did not prepare this budget, the treasurer did, who's no longer with the city.
All right.
So, I, I...
Just asking, I understand.
It's better to try and get this project.
It goes up and down, I know that, Bill.
10, 20, 10.
And you don't know, it's kind of hard to anticipate, so she budgeted it low, probably.
We have one issue with the tax title attorney that has been, is being solved, and it's, it's moving to auctioning property, and that was a tremendous expense over, I don't know how long the property...
But it's done, it won't be needed in 2000. And the only other question I have is, why do we pay insurance for $2,300 that's not covered by our other insurances? Last, sec, third, last item?
I believe that may be, uh, actual surety bonds for staff.
Okay.
Staff are bonded because we handle cash.
That makes sense, okay, good answer, thank you. JP or Bill or Joe?
No.
Good job, Mike, that, Mike.
It sounds right, Mike, so, we'll go with it. Bill, JP?
On the, the payroll processing, those, both, those lines, so it's $26,400 for that, combined?
School and, school and city are separate, there.
Okay. And then on, uh, education and training, so that line in the past has been $100, $900, and now it's up to $2,500, and I understand it was cut and brought to a different line, or a different department?
It went to your department, I understand.
Right, but I'm just wondering why that inflated to 2,500 from previous years of actuals being under 1,000.
I think a lot of, yeah, if I can answer, I think a lot of that is because of the increase of the finance department staff, the, for the training.
So, there was a commitment by myself, as well as the finance director, to do more formal professional development training for the finance staff, there was some consolidation of positions and functions from fiscal year 19, there are also different certifications around procurement, as, as well as finance-related, you know, updates with law, with software and whatnot, and we really tried across all departments to, to increase that professional development.
And, and we might see it level set when, when it's all cycled over the new department and everything else.
Yeah, I mean, we put this, you know, those two new paper departments, we're really more closely tracked, uh, dollars, and of course, with office supplies, kind of get the, the boost of a, a different rate point, probably in, in price, but with training and education, you get a percentage of, of what we need, and what we're missing, and also getting credit from our insurance company for doing it, and being very quick that we can just produce that for...
Yeah, yeah, it streamlines the process, I completely agree with it, I just wanted to know where the increase was on that. And then with postage, again, it goes with that whole concept of... And then with postage, again, it goes with that whole concept of streamlining. So we kept $15,000 under finance, but all the other departments was taken out and went to that new department? I'm just wondering why $15,000 stayed? Huh? Why didn't it move to the one department, I guess?
Postage is moving to, uh...
Remember, we kept $15,000 in the finances department?
For postage?
For postage.
For postage, yeah.
Five, three, four, two.
It's there.
Ten line, ten line.
No, no, I was in the other, but... It might be formatting, but it should be office supplies are 15, and then postage is...
No, office supplies went over to the other.
Yeah, office supplies moved, but postage didn't.
Yeah, so that's...
What's that?
I thought finance was taking the post.
Nope, no, it's in the other department.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's 17, 511 in the other department, which is going to be
Correct.
my responsibility, central purchasing.
On page 49, 1380.
1380, right. Department 1380, central purchasing. Uh, I'm not sure if that maybe is simply a mistake, a typo. Uh, I could run the math and see if that's the case.
We'd appreciate it, Dan.
Could be one of the sewer bills? Is there enterprise, the charge of...
You know, that, that, that could be.
I thought enterprise had their own separate departments.
They did charge back for it, but it's actually in the treasurer's.
Yeah, if you look at the, uh...
Yeah, it's in the, that staff person works in the treasurer's office at this time, now from DPW. And that, maybe that is a charge back to
And if you look at the way the...
to the enterprise fund for mailing the water sewer bills.
If you look at the motions, we are taking some of that out.
And again, I apologize, I've been, I just think this is, I did not prepare. Sorry.
There is $161,000 in the general government motion that comes from enterprise. So that might be part of it, the sewer and water bills.
We can certainly clarify that for the, the general public.
For the public hearing, we'd like that, okay.
Actually, you can get it to us a little bit earlier than that date, so maybe we could have that.
Just confirm that that is water and sewer. I, I recall that being the case.
There's still postage in both water and sewer, in the amount of $7,500. So postage wasn't taken out of water and sewer?
Uh, you know, again, I'll, I'll look at those numbers and check the math, make sure it's not a typo, and get back to you with clarification.
Michael, we do know we're at a disadvantage, and we understand, don't worry about us being upset about it. But it's way you can get through it. Under, going on, JP?
Just to revisit the city payroll processing and the school payroll processing again. It was a little bit unclear when that, when that change happened, because there was no budget item in 2000 FY19. So how are we doing the payroll processing now?
We consolidated it all onto one floor as of this year.
Okay, but there's no...
There are two separate ones. There are two separate people handling payroll. One handles school, one handles city.
The payroll, yes, but I'm talking about the payroll processing outsourced proposal. When does...
But it's, it's in Harpers, it is divided. Harpers is the program we use, I'm sorry. Harpers is the software.
Software program, okay.
In Harpers, there are two separate protocol companies, city and the school. In order to charge back, mark the, the costs, it's divided. So I think in this budget, you know, transparently, is to have a clear that this is the cost for the city, this is the cost for the school.
So we have our own people doing payroll processing, both for the school, some for the school, some for the...
They do the data input.
Data input. This is for the program?
It's for the program, it's where they issue the, the pays, the stubs, they issue to the W2, say, you know...
Who's the "they"?
Harpers.
Harpers payroll.
Harper's payroll is a company.
It's the company.
It's a software that we input here.
But it is the company.
Goes to a different company that does the actual...
Pardon me, the software is Millennium.
Millennium.
The company is Harpers.
There you go. Okay, so they input the data through Millennium?
Yes.
Goes to Harpers. They do all the actual...
Do all the calculations for the...
And when we get our pay stub, it's coming from them?
Yes.
And this is paying for it?
Yes.
$26,400.
How does the charge get calculated? Is it by purse, by number of people?
By number of employees.
Okay, so it looks like it's the same charge for the whole school department and for the whole city side, so... So it was split 50/50. Okay, good. Just wanted to be sure I understood.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Re-raise the question, I mean, though, where, where was it budgeted last year?
Was Harper's paid last year?
Or any payroll, I mean, we had a payroll process last year, even if it wasn't Harper's, where was it budgeted last year?
Sorry, um, fiscal 19 would have been the first year that it would have been a full year. But we, Millennium slash Harper's was, uh, first initiated in October, November of 17. So I don't think it would have been 17, in fiscal 18, so I did.
No, it was not, it was 19, it would have been a partial year.
It was taken out professional services last year.
Okay, that's where it was. That makes sense. And now you've separated it out?
Yes.
For payroll processing.
There's the $26,000.
There it is.
Because the 26 appears as a front broken out of city and school.
There you go, and you know what?
Professional services dropped from 36.
I want you to know that I thought of that, because I heard it circled with an arrow going right up there.
That's interesting.
It's like, you know, I didn't think, is that what it is?
That's what you asked.
And you see the increase?
Did a good job.
I did something like that.
Yeah.
Professional services, thank you. Moving on to...
Thank you very much, Val, that cleared fight everything.
Yep.
Would I like to go on a little bit? Well, we knew, Michael, you needed support, so we had Val.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
I've been leaning on Val.
You're welcome, library. Uh, central purchasing, this is a new account, right? We're putting all our purchasing of stuff through the treasurer's office. Okay, so the only clarification we need is in the postage area, finding out if enterprise is paying for that in your budget rather than central purchasing.
Yes, and the $15,000 listed in our department budget versus the 17, 511 listed as postage in the central purchasing budget, which is a subsection of the treasure.
Okay. You guys have any other questions?
So...
Where are you seeing the postage in the enterprise budgets?
No, 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 I need to clarify that for the councils, they want to know where the $15,000 in the finance budget is coming from, is that enterprise funds operating postage for water sewer bills?
In other words, we have a, we have, what do you call it, payback in the, in the account, 160-some thousand in finance. And I'm assuming that has to do with tech, water bills, et cetera, and it might be the postage part of it. Rather than put it here, although I don't see why there'd be a difference, but I'd like to know if that's it.
And it is in waters, water had 7,000 and sewer had 500, that wasn't cut out, so...
Water and sewer also have mailings, correct?
We have our own mailing.
Yeah, I think...
Mailings beyond the water bills?
Correct, they, they send out an annual report on water quality.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
There goes various...
Okay, and you don't, you didn't want to consolidate that, that's staying in DPW.
Some issues with consolidating activities from offsite, the only offsite consolidation that was part of this year's budget was office supplies and postage from council and...
Offsite, you mean out of this bill?
Yeah, I think maybe office preparation as well.
And the water department is considered offsite because it's down under... All right, anything else?
Yep, um, forms and supplies under this line. I, I went department by department and I added up all the numbers of every line. I couldn't find any forms and supplies that were cut from any budget in the previous years, can you just find where that came from?
We broke down forms and, uh, forms and supplies were essentially buried in the office budget of the other departments like city auditorium orders, the forms for the purchase orders.
Okay.
Other forms, uh, used for community... Those are purchase orders, maybe the 1095s. But that does, yeah, the, the forms refer to ordering purchase orders for use by the city. Because that was part of her office budget previously, but now it's all in central purchasing.
So then we have like tech services or whatever tech, technology, the next department we're checking had $8,000 under forms and supplies, but it wasn't consolidated into this, so where... I was looking at different lines and I saw some were funded with the ones, and now we're consolidating some others. Yeah, I just didn't, didn't add up to me, I guess.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a fair point. I'm not sure where, what the $8,000 in technology budget refers to, it's as forms and supplies. If it's office supplies, it really should be in the... Central purchasing.
Correct.
Unless it's specific to something that Ashley performs exclusively for his...
As well, there are cross-spending technologies combined now with school. And there may be something, so we did not, public safety in school as far as office supplies were pretty much the reasons not captured in, in the...
Right, and that's why I was okay with approving theirs when we did, you know, because it didn't
Right.
take money out of it from one.
Ashley does purchase, essentially purchase all the toner for the printers and papiers.
For everybody in this building?
Everybody, yeah.
Us too.
Us too.
Public safety as well.
All the paper.
Uh, the papers coming over to my office.
This way, it's just, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, it's, we're supposed to be streamlining things, and it's making it more confusing.
So the, uh, maybe it's the language that is incorrect, that we should talk about, uh... The toner, rather than forms and supplies, maybe as a toner.
Supplies works.
Well, then you got office supplies, you got forms and supplies, you got everything else, I mean, it's just...
Perhaps next year we can refine this a little better in describing.
Is there a way to change the narrative? There's also a point for just consistency that the accounts in the original descriptions stay the same. There's cross-spending in several different departments' technologies. One of them, the community contact grant, about three years ago, took those functions between school and city into form. And that included positions as well as certain licensing purchases, toner, and other, uh... Mouses and, and whatnot. It's very difficult to, to pull those apart.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, to me, an office supply, a toner, paper, I mean, it's all stationary.
I'll, I'll include with clarification I provide with, regarding the revaluation question in the $15,000 in our finance, I appreciate that, may or may not be, of course.
Anything else?
All that is, yes. Appreciate that.
JP?
I just would concur with Bill, it, it makes a lot of sense, and we'd like to have that very clear for us.
As much as you can, Mike.
Yes, of course.
I'm moving on to IT, is that okay?
Yep.
Yes. What is the IT management stipend? I know they both add up to her fee, her total. That, that's $65,000, is there a salary, but why is there a stipend?
That just reflects the, the IT director, which is a scarce, and the stipend, just to take on some responsibilities only consolidated after the IT person who is dedicated to the city, Barry, retired.
So you moved it up there, just calling it a stipend, it doesn't, as part of the sal... I'm just curious why it's...
Yes, I, yes, so Ashley took on some public safety, uh, support for the technology licensing for the city that Barry is one person, you know, it was two separate, so the city IT budget is paper. And they're all IT personnel, all commander, Ashley, who last year was just the, the school district's executive.
Okay, I have nothing else. I noticed that the total budget is down $10,000, but I assume that's because we cut some things that moved over.
I think it's the same, it's down 10 from the request.
Oh, I'm, my apologies, you're totally right, it's up $800.
Essentially the same.
It's up $800, it's level funded, I apologize, yes.
Just had a question about the IT manager's salary. So at 50%, the requested budget was at 65, so that would mean that that's 50% of the person's salary?
I don't think, I think it was just separated, and the $18,000 stipend was taken out. So if you look at the true salary, it's the $47,000. So if we look at a pay raise or whatever, it's based off the $47,000.
Based off the $47,000, not 65.
That's for two people. Ashley has another person working for him, and they're paid by the school department.
It says IT manager.
Yeah.
The IT management stipend, that's for a second person.
He's got a part-timer also, and he, he is paid, they're paid by the school department, but for managing our IT, they both get a stipend from our, um, corporation.
Okay, school department pays some of the IT?
His regular salary.
We're paying 47, and the school department's paying some of it too?
Yeah, he has a standard contract with a school for his services, and they pay him for being their IT person.
Right.
And we're adding additional responsibilities, he's taking over the city IT that Barry used to do, and so we're paying him a stipend for doing the city.
I get it. So about the $47,000 that's listed here?
Yeah.
That's his salary, total salary?
It's for him, and it also pays a stipend to another person that works for him, who helps him.
But it's just as listed as IT manager.
And there's only one budget?
Yeah, it comes out of the same line item.
And then there's an IT management stipend listed below it for $18,000, so there's two items, IT manager.
Okay, so the IT maybe is for his...
For the stipend.
Helper, yeah, assistant or whatever.
And the total salary is then is listed as 65, 497.
It, it protects me too, um, the salary is reduced under IT manager because the responsibilities are split between school and the city, the $18,000 goes to the IT manager, who is the one who is providing the services to public safety. And to the city, you'll probably see a shift in the net fiscal budget as he trains up, um, the newest employee. So we decided to spend, to give a stipend rather than bring somebody up on a higher salary with benefits, and the stipend bridges the difference. I would expect to see a shift in that for next fiscal year, um, once we consolidated a couple of, of programs and, um, that will come before we say.
Okay. I think I get that. Anything else?
IT.
Moving on to human resources. It's funny you call it human resources, but I do have something.
I do have something. I'm looking at the telephone. Budget, $14,000, I thought we were, what is that for?
Ashley manages all of the phone, both the cell, both, um, desktop and cell.
It used to be in the mayor's budget, didn't it? I think.
So that's what...
Yeah, no, it used to be in human resources.
So they moved it up there. We're about to find out.
Good, that helps, that helps.
I think it's interesting that we didn't, we didn't change the charter to human resources, but we changed the budget, I like that.
Okay.
Because charter says personnel. That's funny. All right, all right. Anything, Jane, on the narrative before we get into the numbers?
There's been a lot of changes in the three months that I've been back.
Really? I wouldn't know.
There's been a lot added to the department. I now handle vehicles, liability insurance, for the city, the risk management, um...
Who did that before? Finance?
Mayor's office, yes, office. A lot more employee matters are being handled in my office.
But not school employee matters?
There's more and more of the school one down there, but I...
There's more and more of the school down there, but I was doing a lot more with Chief of Burning and Green. I have a lot more contact with the police department, fire department now, employee matters that they were just kind of handling on their own.
Is that, I, I don't understand now. Maybe Chief, you can address it. The collective bargaining meant that you had to handle it. How does that work?
No, collect, well, collect, no, collective bargaining personnel's always had a hand in collective bargaining or.
I mean, in, in, is this a disciplinary kind of thing or is it, it's other things?
Benefits.
Benefits.
Yeah.
Disciplined, it's all policies, checks. He may write his own policies, but they'll check to see if HR has an issue with it.
Okay. What benefit issues? You deal with like fire too that way? Okay. So you're dealing with all city and some school? Do we have enough help?
I will in the next month.
We have budgeted enough help in other ways.
Friends and.
You feel confident that you'll be able to handle it once you get the personnel on its side?
We, so until we see what happens with, you know, changes or whether more of school come, you know, we start handling more of school or any other matters that we can handle.
My opinion that it's more efficient for you to handle it. That ought to be fixed. If you're gonna do it, you do it. If you're not gonna do it, then have them do it all. It shouldn't be half and half. That's just my opinion. I wanted it on the record. Looking at the numbers. Your, your salary went up and I assume that's the new pay plan step? No?
No. Right?
Eighty-five.
No, that's not included.
I'm sorry.
It shouldn't be. It wasn't part of that.
Oh, that's right. So why is it eighty-five, eight-twelve? Is that because you're paid differently than last year? Than the, than the person, you weren't here last year. Never mind. Sorry. Different person. Okay. And the sixty-five was split to two people? Okay. Supplies and services? Again, that went down from eighty-five. I assume a lot of that went into central purchasing? Is that where that is? Or is that office supplies?
Well, that's office supplies and the city purchasing.
So what supplies and services?
Supplies and services. Services, I do a lot with three women physicals, medical evaluations, that all come out of.
And you have to pay for services?
To pay for it.
Okay. And they just cut it back? Okay. Gentlemen? Anything for Major?
You can cover that.
Joe? Thank you, Jane. There we go. Education and training, Jane, this is under you. This is a new account, correct?
Yeah.
And this is for all employees? Does it cover public safety?
It does.
I didn't think so, because they have a big training budget. Yeah.
Because they have a lot of requirements?
They have a lot of departments.
Part of the goal of the centralized training, education and training is to not only encourage more advancement of the existing employees, but also to start monitoring more of what conferences and that people are going to, are they really applicable to the jobs? Because we want them to know that, other than wanting our employees to go to conferences and continue to head, we want it to be something that's gonna be applicable either to their existing job or if they're on some sort of succession plan or future growth for the employee.
Do department heads require training of certain levels of employees that they sent to you? In other words, Joe might have somebody that needs some training and he says that so-and-so needs to get some training at this conference or at this school, a couple of days or whatever.
They'll have to send in a request that'll be approved with the backup. Or we're working a lot with, I'm doing a lot of work with having conferences and training come here. We just had worked on training. We sponsored it here, so through Omaia. Whenever I see there's a local Omaia seminar, it disperses information to the departments to see who we can go. Because every time we send an employee to Omaia training, he gives us credit off our insurance. So that's part of the other goal of having it centralized is that to be able to find more training, you know, to assist both getting us credits on the insurance and getting employees credit.
That's good to hear. Training gives us lower insurance rates?
Bringing the Omaia training.
Bill, you had to end up there.
Yep. Dues and memberships. So again, I went through all the departments that it was cut out of and totaled eighty-four, fifty-six as what was, I guess, essentially requested by each department. So it was cut to eighty-one, eighty-two. Dues and memberships don't seem to have any flexibility. I mean, it's only three hundred bucks, but is that a way to streamline?
Again, it's, who's the membership being centralized is again to start monitoring.
True numbers?
Are we really sent, are we really paying for a membership that's applicable to that job?
Okay. So we may see some savings on that, which is good too. And, and so I guess I got on the education and training too, same question, you know, sixteen nine, nine, sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars is what was requested by the departments themselves. So it's, it's a cut of like five grand. So is that kind of the same concept that you're gonna make sure everything's applicable, but we're looking to save five grand?
We're looking to save five grand. Would I have like the five grand or for sure?
Sure, absolutely, because anything's there, but.
But, yeah.
A lot of people would cut, yeah.
I'm just looking at the fact that, you know, education and training, we're looking to streamline it. We're looking to train our teams, make sure it's all centralized and, and everybody's got the credentials they need to perform the, the jobs. And it's just five thousand under what was requested by the departments. That's.
But I also think that by having it centralized, there is gonna be a lot of work that wouldn't have been just aren't applicable or there's something closer by to, to us.
Instead of going to Boston, you can go to Springfield, something like that? Okay. That's all.
If that makes sense, efficiency might save some. Anything?
Thank you.
City clerk. She's on vacation.
She's not here, listen.
Let's cut our budget. We don't need the clerk. On that note, the chief is leaving.
She's leaving. All right.
We can cut the police department. We approved that one. It's the only one we approved.
All right, all right.
Obviously, there's not a lot of fluff here. It's pretty much level funded. There is the fact that I noticed that elections are budgeted. I'm moving on to elections because it's under her. I think we moved, we moved elections. Her requested for money for elections went to postage there.
Sorry to be disruptive to me, can I say?
No, she's not. It's planned.
We love Rayma, don't worry.
I love you too, Dan.
Maybe you can answer this, Mike, or Val. Her, her salary. Where it says salaries, is that for election workers or some of that to Barbara? She gets a stipend, right? It says stipends. There's no line here. Is that already included in her?
Yeah, the election workers come out here.
All right. And then the stipend that's listed here, that it's already in her budget? In her salary, under her regular salary? I forget how that payroll worked out. But she does get a stipend for running elections.
I think that's listed under elections clerk, maybe?
Yes.
In the first item, in the middle, six hundred dollars?
Yep.
Middle, six, is it? Not line item for six hundred dollars. Page sixty-six. Under the offender account description.
No, I have sixty-six.
Page sixty-six.
Elections clerk, six hundred. Got it. Sorry.
Yep.
I'm being silly.
No, that's fine.
Doesn't seem like enough considering her elections have done. That's. Anybody have any other questions on city clerk? City clerk, Joe, JP, and including elections? You know, if we just cut the planning department, we'd save a lot of money.
Sure.
Who needs one fairy street? Do you wanna say anything? Oh, I'm moving on, JP, okay?
No, no, I just, if you look at the budgets for other communities, planning department, I think we're doing great.
Yes.
With our two staff.
I was only kidding.
I just wanted to put that one on record.
Do you have anything to say? There's a lot of narrative here because you've done a lot. I don't know if you wanna say anything for the cameras, but I always ask department heads to do that first.
I, I'd rather, so there's a lot of narrative in there that, you know, there's thought and some content there, so it's important, but the things I just wanna touch on are what's not in there. So, you know, I did present some information to the mayor that, you know, I've assessed the overall staffing needs of the planning department over the last year. And I think it's just important to kind of just set the stage for the long-term staffing needs. You know, we've had a really successful couple of years, but to, to sort of actuate sort of the internal expectations and then the external expectations of the department for the community to ensure that we get continued forward progression of all planning-related activities. A series of changes in staffing over time will be necessary. I do understand the budgetary constraints placed on all departments, especially this fiscal year, but I believe that sort of outlining the vision of staffing needs now is critical to support the long-term budget process in the next couple of years. What is difficult to articulate in the narrative and in the content that you have provided is that we're still closing gaps that were created by grant-funded positions. So, you know, what I have presented is the minimum, you know, incremental changes allowed under the cap. So what, what you don't see though is, so the, you know, we're filling gaps incrementally, but there are still, you know, some needs in the department. The assistant planner position was partially funded through the development block grant. So under the previous administration, previous planner, there was a decision made to provide that funding source to the planning commission, higher value planning commission. So it created a ten-hour-a-week gap to bill in that position. So this budget does that.
Plus the CPA is paid for something.
So, yeah, there's a couple of sources of funding that we're pulling from, but the community development block grant funding is gone. So this budget, you know, fills that gap. The arts coordinator position was previously grant-funded and over the past three years there's been smaller incremental changes to make that a fully funded position. So it's very important and it's meaningful. So the city planner and the arts coordinator are general funded. Then the, the city had a grant a couple of years ago with the town of Southampton, it's a share conservation agent. So the progression of that allowed us to fund, you know, seven and a half hours of that position to the general fund. It's nineteen hours per week. So, so that's one of the bigger gaps that we are yet to fill. And what's happening this year is sort of a shuffling of funding to build up gaps. The conservation agent position has ended up only getting one or two six hours from the general fund. And we're going to use the Weather Protection Act account to fund six more hours to create a twelve-hour position. So currently that position's going for nineteen hours per week as well. Under this budget, the assistant planner position is going from thirty-four hours per week to thirty-two hours. And the arts coordinator position's going from.
Is that thirty-two hours include the CPA? Really?
And the arts coordinator position's going from thirty-four hours per week to thirty-two. So, so we're filling some gaps, but we're, we're very lean. And what I put forth for the mayor was just an observation that over time, I think the goal, you know, with all clarity is the conservation agent position ultimately could be pulled on. And the remaining component that we would need would be some kind of hard time administrative system. So I asked for the conservation agent to be funded nineteen hours per week in the general fund and to fund twelve hours per week in administrative system where it wasn't funded. So you can see in the back of the full budget that I have, that you do see a requested twenty twenty budget, which just was outside of the parameter set. So I was, you know, I acknowledge that that is starting to fulfill the vision of the planning department. You're kind of asking, well, what, why do we need that we're so successful this year? The way I see it is that we're currently implementing and administering all these grants and that's, you know, we're, we're to the max to do this, but without the additional staffing, we're, we're gonna fill a lull in what we can continue to apply for. So we want to be continuing the progression. So a limited staff is gonna come down a little bit from here to manage all the grants rather than continuing to explore a lot more. So I have a three-year sort of plan.
To try and catch up with these.
I'd like to try to catch up with these now that we're kind of getting closer to the incremental filling gaps. I think the last thing I'll say is I think while we have the current governor, I think funding sources are gonna continue to come forward for these pounds. So within the next three years, we want to be continuing to pursue the planning and infrastructure grants. So I think it's important. So I'll spare you all the details that are actually in narrative, but that's, that's why I have a whole for you.
So just to recap, you lost economic development grant that paid for some of the salaries. Is that what you just said? Conservation agent, assistant planner, things like that? And you have to catch up because that grant no longer is available to fund these positions. That's correct. Are there any other grants that can help us fund these positions in the meantime while you catch up? Because I know we were applying for grants, for instance. Do they have to be managed? Are you managing grants that aren't paying for them?
There has been some internal shifts to make sure that we have resources to manage the grants. The, the grant programs that are being put out now do not cover administrative costs. So it's a by and large, it's a lump of money and it's administered through years of staff. So CPA was generous to increase the amount of the admin fund that are available and that helps. So, so CPA has a small portion of its budget that can be used for salary and then the wellness account is a self-generating, is there our application fees, then those revenues can be used for salary. So I'm tapping all those to try to fill in these gaps. Kind of reliable funding sources. It's the, the one-off grants that, the community development block grant shifting to the community agencies created the whole.
Okay. You just answered all the questions I got. I, I think it's unfortunate. I know, for instance, that Jamie does tremendous work for the CPA and I know how valuable she is to you. And to see that she's being cut back three hours is disappointing, but I see why now. I was asking that question. I see why. You lost a grant. So if there's any way that can be fixed sooner rather than later, I think she's valuable. Plus, I'm not sure you have enough staffing for all we're trying to do and I know the mayor agrees, but that's gonna have to be worked out over time. But it's unfortunate. But anyway, you guys have any questions? Because he answered all mine.
No.
City BG grants, the whole, all the money is going to the, what is, where, where's it going?
So we are mini-involvement, which means that we are not a mini-involvement. So it means that we have to apply competitively each year for the funding.
Like Northampton, so does it get to there?
Right, right. But if you highly desire, well, it's not an expected thing to have a commission. So, so the grant that was awarded, the FY eighteen grant, there were decisions made to shift that grant administration in the project to the planning commission.
That Pioneer Valley?
Right, right.
Isn't that a, it's not really an easy happen to base organization. I mean, they were the Pioneer Valley, so. in the Pioneer Valley, so there's administrative ones that pass the block grant program and they have the administrative ones.
It's not at all bad. I think it's good that we are shifting some of that responsibility to the commission, but it's less a funding gap that is showing.
Will we be able to apply for CBV against the future? Because I know sometimes we don't qualify, do you know?
Yes, we could shift that program to the commission back, probably not next year that you're at.
Anything else?
Effect and services to the community? Is there, is there effect in services? Do, the community development block grant is still in, still there? It's still being used for various purposes within the community? Access by the citizens are there? They're just accessing through?
Yeah, it's a project, so it's a structure project.
PBPC?
Yep, it's a, it's a, it's a structure.
PBIC is administrative, right?
Yeah, someday it's almost underway, we should be breaking ground in some way. But your question was impacting the community.
Sometimes, sometimes community development block grants funds were, in the old days, were used for a variety of purposes. How are they being used for? Which now, infrastructure improvement?
Yeah, it's a four-phase project on Admiral Street, and there's some housing to have that's, that was established as a project.
For example, there might be funds available for people to help fix their boilers if it broke in winter, or, you know, if they qualify in certain districts. Is that still in operation?
Yeah, and that's what Jamie's been assisting with that part of the program.
Good, anything else? Okay, we finished that. Well, I have a CPA. I'm happy to say that it looks very much like, I gotta find the paper, paper CPA.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
164-ish?
165. It looks like, from all I know, is that he is being increased. We're going to get a 30% match. Did I skip one?
Yes, building operations.
My apologies, go to 78. Yeah, because I jumped to public safety here and I didn't see that budget. Do you guys have any questions? Because I actually missed this one. Any major changes here? It looks like it's almost double-funded, building operations.
So, the ones I had was repairs and maintenance, and then maintenance and repairs. There's two lines, I don't know what the difference is, I don't know who could explain that one.
I got it. Let me just make sure I have the right one.
Are you guys taking over building operations?
Mm-hmm.
So, this is really not under the general government, huh?
They're not taking it when we have it.
Yeah, it was, it was in their section.
I meant, I meant it's in the mayor's or the general government budget, but it's going to be in your budget in the future.
It is now.
Okay, I don't know.
Close.
Yeah.
It's under the general government section?
Yeah, we just have to shift it.
To DPW. When we vote general government in, we're voting this in now. Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
Okay, equipment repair is like the lawnmower and that kind of stuff. Building maintenance and repair is building maintenance and repair, like boilers and stuff like that.
Okay, so which ones which? Because they...
Okay.
They all say maintenance and repair.
Equipment, repair, maintenance.
Okay, so equipment, repair, maintenance, and then it's building, maintenance, and repairs.
Right.
Got you.
So, the word equipment and the word building might be added to those two lines next year?
I think they are. Well, I have them that way.
I'm just saying, maybe they cut them.
Oh, they, oh, they might have just shortened it. Oh, God, sorry, yeah.
Well, that's what leads to questions.
Equipment, repair, maintenance, should be, I think they gave us $2,000 for that one. So, that's what equipment repair is, that's lawn mowers and that kind of thing. And then the building maintenance is like roofing, boiler systems, air conditioning.
But this isn't school buildings, is it?
Oh, no.
It's just a year.
This is municipal, this is...
I'm saying that because I know the answer.
32 Payson and COA.
I know the answer, but I want them to know the answer.
Yeah.
Because $8,000 wouldn't dare go cover the school.
So, that line went from a thousand bucks to the 8,000. Did you anticipate anything?
Well, what happened is a lot of the stuff came out of professional and technic, technical services, like miscellaneous professional and technical service. We had asked for more money there, but it actually is, should be in building maintenance and repair for like the boiler systems. Like, we had the roof repaired.
So, it used to be in a professional services, you're putting it into here.
Into, into building maintenance instead.
Just a shifting of where it's accounted for.
Right, so it's a little bit more appropriate where it belongs.
Good. Got it? Anything else, Bill?
Yeah, equipment repair went...
From a thousand to 2,000. What we're doing there is we no longer hire somebody to come mow our lawns. Our custodian that we have now is mowing the lawns. So, in order to keep the equipment, the lawnmower had to have service this year, which it'll have to have every year, and quit, you know, just maintenance, oil changes, on that kind of stuff to keep it up to par. So, and that saves us about, that saves us between $3,000 and $4,000 instead of hiring out a professional service to come in. It's only going to cost us $1,000 more to have him.
So, so we budgeted 250 in the past years. This year you got $1,000, but you asked for 15,000. So, is that...
That's in a different line item.
That...
It's under equipment repair.
Equipment repair, yeah. This one is for vehicle repair for, we had the, we had requested...
Yeah, remember, this goes back to the vehicle that we wanted to move, the DPW director vehicle, to the building inspector, by the inspectors, in terms of new vehicles. That didn't happen, so we have an old police cruiser in there now, high mileage police cruiser. That's going to need a lot of repair.
For the building inspector.
For the building inspector and the accessory.
So, you asked for 15, but you only got 1,000.
So, we're hoping nothing really breaks.
So, what I'm going to ask for is for more clarity next year on these lines, where building, where equipment, and where it says equipment repair vehicle, repair, because that's what that's for. Am I right?
Sure.
Now, we'll take care of that.
I don't know who's responsible for that.
I'll come first when Fallon will figure it out.
I'm only saying this because...
Yeah, it makes it confusing.
Somebody like Bill, who's due to this, reading this, gets confused, and I get confused.
Like me.
I'm new too, so it took me a while to figure it out.
Well, that, we're just saying as a little tiny improvement spell.
No, absolutely.
Anything else on the building operations?
Those are for me.
Counselors? Nothing? 164, thank you. I jumped ahead to the CPA. I wanted to make it clear to everybody that you'll see under historic, the line item that says 275 for 2019, we set aside in the CPA committee 200,000. We wanted to set aside some money to bond for the improvement of the town hall so that we could pay for some of that directly without bonding the whole thing when it came. We did a set aside of 200,000. Valerie said that has to go in historic, has to be set there, correct, Val? Has to be there. So, now that line is raised. The committee felt that, and I did, that that commits it to only historic. We can't move it out of historic to use it for something else. It has to be used in the event that the town hall doesn't get done, bad, hopefully never happen scenario. That historic money has to stay there and be used for other historic preservation. Whereas we were hoping we could have our own line that says set aside for town hall, and that could be moved out. There's no restriction on moving it out in the future. So, this year we did not budget that 200,000 because we didn't want to restrict it to historic preservation. We earmarked it, sort of, we don't know how that'll fly, but, and that's basically an internal thought of the committee to say, we are going to commit 200,000 each year so that eventually maybe there's a million dollars we could put onto the building and not have to bond the entire thing. That's what the committee wants to do. We had hoped to put it in the budget, but we don't want to commit it in historic preservation and keep it there. Jamie, chime in if I've said anything that doesn't make sense.
That's good. You asked me to...
Yeah, I have some documents here that I wanted to hand out. This is the budget. This is what we hand out to every committee. This, this tells you where our accounts are right now. The budget is what we get from the state and from local taxes. If you look in the trends part, where does that trend page? Anyway, we have got our match, oh, that was under revenue. Our match is only, has gone down considerably every year to very low now. But the state, as I said, it looks very good because both the House and Senate agreed to 30, 30 million, what am I thinking? 30% automatic match to every community. And that's big because we have huge communities coming in now. Austin, Springfield, they started getting into the pool, and the pool's bigger. So, that'll help fund, if we want to bond for something as big as the town hall, that'll help fund that. So, we won't see that unfortunately, right, until 2021.
And we can't actually bond against the state match.
We can't, but it helps us fund other things. In other words, if we have that income coming in, when we want to use our own income to bond with, do you understand what you just said? We have taxes, tax that we bring in, we can bond against that, but we can't bond against the state. Anyway, this budget has, we have to set aside 75,000. That's a little higher than we have to do, but we, is that true, Jamie? I forget.
Yeah, so we're estimating to raise 430,000 in local rent yields. And this was in March before we had the news of what the additional state match may or may not be, what their legislative. So, we estimated a 10% match of that from the state, which would be $43,000 of budgets based off of that, 473,000. And then if we get more money from the state when they do the match in November, that will go to, they pull in like free cash, so at the end of the year gets served that in the, so our budget's 473 for the year, but whatever extra money we bring in will show up in the undesignated.
Undesignated, and that fund is where we draw for anything. Okay.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, understanding correctly, with a 473,000 budget, I thought the requirement was that the city set aside 10% for each historic affordable housing.
Right.
Correct, so we know, we know that the 10%, the 10%, the, a 10%, it would be $43,000, sorry, $47,000.
473.
We know that that 10% that we're estimating is going to be low. We just don't know how low. And then we have, if we get a huge match from the state this year, as long as we don't get more than $750,000 in total revenue, we don't have to come back to readjust the budgets.
So, we estimate high...
And the 75,000 that goes into the set aside, historically we've spent, you know, most of our money that's set aside, we always spend from that, CPA spends from that money first. If you look at the handout, you can see what's currently in each of the set asides. Consider where open space is almost spent out for FY19, historic preservation, like Dan was saying, has that $200,000 earmark for the old town hall, so that's not going to get lower. And then affordable housing, hasn't been, it's only been about $16,000 is appropriated from historic preservation, sorry, affordable housing this year. But the 7, the additional 75, the higher 75,000 hasn't been a problem.
And, and the rule is not that you have to set aside 10%?
Or spend.
Right.
Or spend, right.
Exactly.
So, if you spend 473...
And we usually do.
Okay, yeah, so. But that, by budgeting to those and approving a budget for that amount doesn't lock those funds into the expense necessarily for those...
It locks them in those accounts though.
It locks it into the account or it doesn't lock it in the account?
Yes. We cannot transfer from any of these accounts to general fund.
To the, to the general CPA fund.
Right, we can't. We have to spend anything that's in historic preservation for historic preservation. That's why we didn't decide not to put the extra 200 in there.
Right.
Because that commits it to historic preservation if the town hall doesn't happen. We'll probably spend it, but we didn't want to increase that to a million dollars or something.
And the other option would be to vote a project for the town hall and put that money in that account and add to it every year and just carry it forward until you do it.
And that's a possibility I'm going to bring up with the CPA because if that doesn't happen, it's a reimbursement account, so we're not spending the money. In other words, if we decide to fund the project and the project doesn't happen, we don't lose the money. Money can be moved back because the project didn't happen. Close the project out. All of this, majority of the money that we spend is reimbursing once something's spent. We pay for it, like Jamie, most of the time. We don't put money upfront, they, we reimburse whatever the bill is or whatever, is that right?
Generally.
Is that generally the case, like for Park, something?
For, for some of, some of the projects that are managed directly by city agencies, they will do, they will purchase directly or use that fund directly. But for almost all of the outside agencies that we work with, we do it by reimbursement. So, they have to be able to somehow pay for the expense and then see reimbursement from the city.
Okay, Bill?
I just had one question. So, when, when the money is not done at the end of the year, whatever's left stays in CPA funds, it does not go to free cash, right?
It's not part of the...
Correct. But when you said that if the state matches or funds more, whatever that difference is, that would go to free cash or...
Free cash is the wrong term. It goes to the undesigned fund, but it's...
Of CPA.
Of CPA, okay.
But it's similar to how the general budget has the free cash.
So, like the reserve or whatever?
We can't spend it ahead of time, Bill? Even though we know it's going to be there, we have to wait.
I understand that, I just, she said free cash, so I didn't know if it went to the general free cash or if there was a... Okay.
The undesigned, I mean, all, all the money that's raised by CPA has to stay in CPA.
Okay, that was, that was it, thanks. Anything else?
Is there any reason, I mean, any reason to do more than the 10% in the budget? Any rational reason?
Yes.
Except for if more money comes in, you could just allocate it later?
We, so if, if we say, you know, historically we've gone a 20% match, and we've budgeted off of, we, so 20% would have been 525,000. But we don't actually get that much revenue because we over-budgeted or we overestimated how much we're going to spend, then CPA committee can, we could, we could actually go into and spend money that we don't have because we don't get the money quarterly, so we may not spend all of the CPA's.
I was suggesting putting into the budget 473 in each category for historic, affordable housing, rather than 75,000. And that way we'd be really tight in terms of what our, we would have met the requirements. And then the rest, the rest of the funds that, the difference between the 75 and the 43, 473 would be available in an undesigned category and be used anyway.
We'll have met it based off of our budget, which is an estimate, but we won't know until the end of the year what we actually took in the revenue. And then at that point in time, in the books for us, we have to, we'd have to move money around from undesigned.
Right, the same argument that we said, we'll just take the whole amount.
Basically, the reserve is the balance of your budget. What, what DOR would really like people to do is line up all of your projects before the fiscal year starts and have all your projects be your budget, and then the reserve is, you know, just whatever is left of what you estimate your revenue to be.
But we don't know where our projects are.
Right, so we don't do it that way.
And I don't think any community can do that.
I don't know, but that's what I was told by the DOR.
My, my point is if we keep putting in, what's the difference between 25, 28,000 dollars every year into the, each fund, and then all of a sudden after many years, that's... that, that's been targeted and locked in to open space, for example. We could really have used that fund, those funds in for our town hall historic preservation.
I, I don't agree, the reason we...
My concern is that we don't over-book funds into various categories and not have them available later on that special big project.
Well, that's why we didn't do the two hundred, but traditionally we have spent most of these lines down. If we get a historic preservation project, it comes out of this line first, so that money is down. By putting the seventy-five in there, we are guaranteeing to the extent that we don't get a huge unexpected match, that we've got ten percent. If our revenue goes up to seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred thousand, we've got to put five thousand dollars more in. So this is the way the CPA committee wants to do it. And traditionally, we've not had a problem spending the money in there. I see your point, which is why we didn't do the two hundred.
Right.
But we're not worried about those budgets not being used because in everything we get, it has to come out of one of those assets. If Parks Department wants something, it has to come out of open space because that's open space and recreation. We will spend the open space account first before we go to the general. If we, we spend it out before we use the reserve line or whatever the other, the undesigned line. So every one of the lines is used before we do that. So this is just making sure we don't have to do a big accounting change at the end of the year because we got more money than we expected, okay?
I just keep looking down the road at that big number for the town hall, and I want to see that we do everything to have money in that account.
Well, where, where it's, where it's going to be is in the general fund. I don't want to put it in a star sheet.
I'd like to see it in undesigned, just much money in undesigned from each category so that we have the balance available in the future.
We have, right now...
I'm not sure we have to do anything about it, is...
We still, we have a million dollars in our accounts now, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, correct? Remaining. That doesn't include this. We didn't approve this yet, so we're okay. Anything else on CPA?
Admin salary.
That's why it's up because she got, they came to us, Jeff came to us and asked to move some of her administration to this line instead of...
And that's was taken, okay, from grant funding?
That's why it's up to...
Got you to fill that out. Thank you.
And considering how much Jamie does for the CPA, probably isn't enough hours anywhere, so. All right. That concludes the normal part of the budget. I want to go back to the bill. You had some questions for the Department of Public Works. You have the floor. I don't know what bill you want to get to.
Well, we had the lab supplies one on page one seventy-three, which were answered in the email. Right, you sent that to everybody. New refrigerator, probes and everything else. That satisfied me on the fifteen thousand dollar increase on lab supplies. It was on that page too.
I saw that.
I'm, I'm satisfied with that one. I don't know if you guys saw that.
I saw it, I was, I was happy to answer it for you.
Good?
I'm good.
All right, and then the other one was the engineering on page one fifteen for the computer supplies. And then you had replied saying that was, so, licensing and fees and things like that?
Yeah.
So if I go, in the years past, we only had it budgeted at like five hundred dollars?
Actually, it bounces. That one bounces and it, I think...
Well, we've added software. GIS software with IWRNT. We've got software we can, you guys can order with your laptop or iPads in the fields to determine where the lines are. There's stuff that we've added.
Sure. And the previous budget fiscal twenty nineteen, it was stated that that line went up because we had the new engineer coming on board and he needed a laptop and a lot of those supplies and that stuff. So, in my eyes, I don't know, I think seventy-five hundred seems...
Steve?
And that's why I was asking, what software licenses and fees do we need this coming year that we didn't purchase last year with the...
Right, well, they have to renew everything. In prior years, it was for a single engineer. Now you have double the costs for, for both engineers. And some of their technical stuff for like their plotters and printers and stuff like that, that they do their big sheets, like they can print out like huge maps and stuff like that. So they need software updates for that also. And some of the stuff, I, because I went back through fiscal seventeen and eighteen, and I even went, you asked about sixteen also, and it seemed like their budget, I'm new to this, I just started in June, so I have...
I just started in January, so it's okay.
Yeah, so, so we're both new here. But what I noticed is that their budget, sometimes their money was in different line items.
Right.
But it was used for, you know, it says professional services, but it was used for computer stuff. So I think that's where it got boggled around and maybe he just put it into computer services because, instead of professional services, because some of the stuff got paid out of the wrong line items or, you know, when they filled out, you know, the paperwork or something, they just didn't use the correct terminology and so it would be like thrown into a different line item.
So sixteen, it was professional services and tax. And it looks like seventeen, maybe, computer peripherals? And then now it's back to, or down to computer services?
Just computer services, yeah. So it's just more streamlining where it actually needs to be and so. And I know like at one point in time, they had purchased, I think it was a government connections or something like that, which was a big, huge part of their getting their software up and running. That was like twelve thousand dollars or something like that at one point in time. So that was just getting like everything like...
Up to speed.
Yeah, updated and more into the century, I guess you could kind of say, so they're all...
Okay. Guess so. I, I just, um, do we have any like estimates of what we're going to be paying in software fees or anything like that or is that just...
I know one of them, it's at least, it's at least twelve hundred dollars for each of the engineers, so...
That's twenty-four hundred right there.
Yeah, and then if they have any other software programs, because they have complete streets that they're going to be working on, they're also going to be working on around about at Ferry Street, around about at the middle school. It's, yeah, they have all kinds of software.
The other thing is we've signed a contract with Honeybond to host our GIS stuff. They can't host it ourselves because we won't have the service, not doing...
So they host it in their server?
They host it in their server. They do all the, the changes, the additions and upgrades of the system. We, you know, change, change how they give them that information and change it so that the mapping is all updated.
And we have access to our own software, but it's stored in their server?
It's stored and updated by them.
And we have to pay for that?
Yep.
Is that, that's under computer services, not in professional services? Because tag and buying usually professional services.
Yeah, that one is, well, July first will be the first time we've done that, so that one will probably be...
Okay.
Okay. I think I'm good with that one.
Good. You guys have anything else on?
You good on it?
Uh, yeah. Just because of the computer peripherals line and the other one, there were eleven thousand in sixteen, thirteen thousand in seventeen. Neither one of them were funded in eighteen, so that, that was where there's a gap. And then in nineteen, we had the seventy-five hundred, which was just, that was, the only thing that was stated then was the new engineer needed a computer and software.
Yeah.
So why, why we need that line again, that's, just doesn't...
Well, hopefully next year, I'll have things, I'll be more involved in what comes up, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just a...
Have it work.
There has been a change in personnel.
Sure, absolutely.
Change in, in the way things interpret things, shall we say?
Right. Yeah. So next year, we should all be able to see the engine.
And you mentioned something that's interesting. When they ask, when they pay for something, engineers, they might put the wrong account line down.
Yeah.
And does that require you as bookkeeper to correct that if it comes to you? Because you was purchasing or do they purchase directly?
They usually do their own purchase orders, so, which...
They don't have to have Joe's approval at the end?
They do, they, they, they do, but...
That takes the time and the...
I'll be honest, the amount of purchase orders coming over my desk, I'm not really comparing, is that in the right line item?
All right, right, okay. Well, it sounds like it requires some education of your personnel.
Yep.
Anything else on...
I have to agree, if you're looking at the bottom line, how much is in the account, making sure the money's calculated properly.
And, and, and I, and I have to make a judgment, judgment falls to, is that a legitimate...
Right.
Right, or, or can that, no, you're not, you're not getting that.
Right. That makes sense.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Uh, yeah, all right, not, not on the computer one, I'm good.
All right.
And then, uh, the last one was in the sewer line, which...
Brush hog.
Brush hog.
So we have an older rail mower
Yep.
that we have, but you can't use that to go straight line. You've got to use that over the rail on the side. So the brush hog that they rent is to take care of.
If, if, that's for cutting pipelines through a railway.
So it's a heavy machine that goes straight, doesn't go over the rail?
Right.
So you said a brand-new brush hog, as is or whatever is eighty thousand dollars, we're renting it for five thousand dollars a year. But there's attachments available for existing vehicles that we have that would do this, that cost around seventeen thousand.
That's correct.
So instead of buying one that we own and we can have for many years, we're renting one for five thousand every year. So in the course of three years, we could have owned our own brush hog.
That's correct. And my theory behind that is I do not want to put a brush hog on our skid steer. It'll, it, it rattles the machine to jump. The machine, I'd rather rent one and beat up somebody's machine. You're out in the, you're out in the woods, you're, you're cutting...
Coming as boulders?
And, uh, we, our skid steer's been the last twenty years. If we put something like this on it, we're cutting it like, who knows, in half. I'd rather spend the five thousand dollars and rent one. And if something happens to it, get back on the trailer and say, here you go.
I understand that, Bill.
It's a hard pill for me to swallow. I mean, if it's an attachment for a vehicle and it's made for that vehicle...
But also our skid steers old. So right now, our skid steer's not a young one that can probably take that abuse either.
That was, that, that was the, that is the philosophy that I've had the last thirty years. Skid steer, skid steer is, has many uses, but to put that on it, you're, you're diminishing the life of that skid steer and I just...
How, how old is our skid steer? It's pretty, it's like ten years, isn't it?
Ten years.
And it costs how much to replace?
Oh, it's like eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand dollars. So if we bought a brush hog, how often do you do the brush hogs?
Well, that's the thing, if, 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 we usually get it in the wintertime when the ground's frozen, so that we can get in off the roadways and get into the fields and get to the, to the pipeline when the ground's cold. So we rent it for a week, hammer the, hammer the machine and get it, get it done and put it back on the trailer and say, here you go.
Okay. I see his philosophy there, Bill, I mean...
I've been around machinery for forty-something years and that is one machine that I've always had that philosophy to lead that, lead...
You use this one week a year maybe for five thousand?
Uh, no, you know, we might, we might get it back or something, or something else. But, but for the most part, if we get that in the wintertime, you know, at the right time, we can do whatever we need to do in a week.
To access a pipe?
To make sure that those pipelines are open.
Okay.
Talking main sewer lines?
Main sewer lines, you interceptors go through the pipeline or something like that. Where if you don't, you leave it for a couple of years, now you've got saplings.
Well, you're going to have saplings if you can't move it.
I got you.
I, I, I hear your point, Bill, and I, I agree that if we can get something with a three-year payback, that makes sense. I don't know how to evaluate rattling a machine and...
I'm telling you.
I hear it. I don't know how to independently value, evaluate it, except to get...
You have to take my professional opinion.
And I, and I take your professional opinion on that. So I'm looking at that and I'm going, okay, we have a, our, our professional's opinion. In order to go against that, we need some corroborating evidence. Like another community has this, this and this, and they have similar terrain and it's working great for them, so why shouldn't we do it here? And I'd bring that evidence to you and you maybe look at it and say, oh, here's why that, they can do it, we can't. Or here's, maybe that makes sense, maybe they have a different machine. And I think that kind of interaction helps us in the future. But I think we have to have some other answer now.
Well, my point too is, it costs eighty-five thousand dollars to buy a single machine to do just the brush hog.
We're not going to do that.
That's a capital expense I don't agree with.
I didn't.
Because...
Yeah, and that's not what Bill's, what Bill's saying.
You were saying buy just the attachment, but that might mean that we have to do very little less like. I have to trust the department heads on this stuff.
Do you know of, of locations that have it? And I don't either often.
I think Bill's philosophy is mine, why are we renting when we could buy? But there may be, sometimes it makes sense. And I have to trust your judgment on that, I do. As I do all the department heads, the chief, all of them. My job is to ask questions, so I can, might be able to answer questions of taxpayers that might ask, why is police department doing this? Why is, why don't we have the roads repaired? How many times I have to answer that question? That's why these meetings are good. Talk to the state, get me more chapter ninety. Costs a million dollars a mile, is that a good, is that about right? A million dollars a mile or something like that? It depends on what you do. If you tear the whole road up...
Yeah, you're going to spend a million dollars on that. And a lot of our roads are being, being torn up.
Go to votes, guys? Do you have any reason not to?
I still see you struggling with this.
I want to be sure we hear it. I'm fine, I guess, I, I'm good, I guess, I, I...
You've got to think of maintenance too, if you're going to beat up the machine.
I get it, I mean, I have, I get it, but it just...
If we had an extra skid steer, that would make sense to designate it for that.
I don't want to designate it, just buy this thing. I, it, it just doesn't make sense to me, but I get it, you know? I'm going to have to come down. When you guys rent this brush hog, bring me down there, let me know. I want to see this thing in action.
I think that, that would be education.
I'll go with you too.
I'm honest on that. I want to see this thing shake the hell out of a truck and, and what it does in, in theory, I want to see it.
One day?
And then we'll know, for ourselves, for our own.
Right. Sometimes they have to see it in action to know or understand what's going on.
Meanwhile, you certainly rely on your thirty-year professional.
With this machine, you can't stand it within a hundred and fifty yards of it because the way it throws stuff out, it throws it against the machine. The machine actually has Plexiglas with a screen.
To protect the driver.
To protect the driver. So, you know, that, that's something that we don't have on our machine and our machine wouldn't look like it does today if we were using it for that, so I'm just telling.
That's fair, thank you.
Are we done with the brush hog?
Yeah, I just want to see it in action, Doug, because it sounds pretty awesome.
Let me go on.
Thank you, thanks.
Reminds me of, what was that, home improvement?
Yep.
All right, I feel like we could vote, and I want to say that I think in our committee, we can vote to approve general government as stated, rather than go through every number because we're going to do that at the public hearing. So unless anybody wants to amend that, I will make a motion for each of these as stated in the mayor's request on page three sixty-two. All right? I, I would like to make a motion to approve section one, general government for the total amount of one million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public safety was done. Schools, I make a motion that, that we recommend to the full council, seventeen million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, ninety-five dollars and twenty-four cents for section three schools.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion, section four, that we recommend to the full council that we approve public works for one million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand... that we approve public works for $1,773,561.32. All in favor?
Aye.
Section five, human services. I move that we recommend to the full council, $644,815.44 for human services. All in favor?
Aye.
Section six, cultural recreation. I move that we recommend to the full council that they approve $577,311.25 for culture and recreation. All in favor? Section seven, debt and interest. I make a motion that we approve for debt and interest. I mean, that we recommend that the council approve $6,725,511.99 for debt and interest. All in favor?
Aye.
Section eight, unclassified, which is employee benefits. I move that we recommend to the full council that we approve $9,220,30.72 for debt, for unclassified. All in favor?
Aye.
For community preservation, I move, I recommend that the city, that we recommend to the city council approval of $473,000 for the section nine community preservation fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Finally, under enterprise, I move that the city count, that we recommend to the city council, the sum of $2,522,922 for enterprise. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can you continue with police again? I think we'd like to go down.
Uh, we'll make a new motion that we approve public safety under section two, that we recommend to the city council to approve public safety,
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Everybody got voted in? Go spend it. No. At the public hearing, I'm going to ask you guys to read some of these, okay?
That's what we traditionally do.
What's that?
We split up the votes.
We're reading, uh-huh.[1715.68]